Welcome, everyone, to the February 18th Eugene City Council Work Session. I guess I would say before we begin our work today, we have a new governor. Congratulations. I've known Kate Brown for many years and look forward to working with her. On our agenda is, first up is Civic Stadium. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll turn it over to Glenn to walk you through that.
Thank you. You should have at your place the motion that I emailed out just earlier today, and I thought what I would do is just walk you through that and then answer any questions that you have. The motion basically just says to authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement consistent with the terms that are on the backside of that sheet. And so if you turn to that, we'll just quickly walk through those. We would sell to the Eugene Civic Alliance. Civic Stadium and the Eugene Civic Alliance would contribute $4,088,000. The difference between that number and the 4.5 million that we would have to pay to 4J is $412,000. That would be the city's contribution. For that, we would retain approximately 25,000 square feet for a pocket park, as well as an easement right-of-way of about 16,000 square feet for a multi-use path, bike path, walking path. The Alliance would have to come up with its $4,088,000 and place it into escrow by February 26th, which is next Thursday. The only exception to that could be for a portion of those funds that would be coming from the Oregon Community Foundation. There are some donors who have said that they are interested in contributing. Their funds are managed through the Oregon Community Foundation. They can direct where those funds go, but the Oregon Community Foundation Board has to take an official action to allow the funds to actually be forwarded to the particular cause, and the Community Foundation Board doesn't meet before the 26th. I'm not sure yet exactly how much of the funds those are. We'll get that information. And so what this would provide is, in the event that they can't find another way to get those funds from the Oregon Community Foundation by the 26th, that in lieu of those particular funds, the city manager could accept assurances that he or I find adequate, so that we know we will get the funds, but it would be after the Oregon Community Foundation Board actually would meet, which would be sometime in, I believe, the first half of March. Assuming that we get the funds and/or assurances on the Oregon Community Foundation funds into escrow by the 26th, a purchase and sale agreement and any related documents are signed, and that the Alliance says it's ready to proceed to closing, so they don't have any other contingencies out there, at that point, then, the city would give written notice to 4J on February 27th that we're prepared to proceed to closing. Last bullet item is that prior to the time that the Alliance would move forward with any construction or rehabilitation of Civic Stadium, that the Alliance and the city would enter into a development and maintenance agreement that would provide that the Alliance would actually do the development of and ongoing maintenance of the pocket park, as well as the multi-use path, so that the cost that the city would be incurring for this would be the $412,000, the ongoing maintenance or development cost of those would be covered by the Alliance.
Thank you, Glenn. So what I'm going to do is, I've got Betty and Mike in the queue. I'm going to have Claire put the motion out, and then we'll proceed with calling on people.
I move to direct the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the Eugene Civic Alliance and to provide notice to 4J about Civic Stadium consistent with the terms and conditions contained in the document titled Civic Stadium Term Sheet, dated February 18th, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Betty?
Thank you. I think this is a great deal, and congratulations to the attorney and the city manager for coming up with something that's good for the community and good for the city. Thank you.
And Mike?
Thank you. I recognize from previous discussions how this vote is likely to go. And I want to say that although I initially worked very hard to try and save Civic Stadium when I thought it was a wise idea to continue to do, that by this vote today, the council majority will once again use everyone's resources in our community to benefit just a very few. We will buy, spend half a million dollars on yet another park in South Eugene, and it's blatantly unfair to the rest of the community, and it's a misuse of public assets, in my opinion. So I'll vote no.
Chris, and then Claire, and then George Polling, and then George Brown. And Alan, do you want to be in the queue?
Uh-oh, just lost that one.
Guess not.
Not.
He'll be back.
Okay.
Noisy.
Pretty noisy.
Please stand by.
He hit the wrong button. He went to unmute.
Unmute and hit the hang on.
Yeah, OFF is not other frequency finder.
Alan, are you there? Alan, do you want to be in the queue?
Yes, please. We got disconnected.
I knew that.
You could probably hear that beeping sound.
I did. I sort of figured it out.
Yeah.
Okay, Chris.
Okay. So my understanding is if we don't get the $4 million-plus, the deal doesn't go through.
Correct.
So my original issue with being on the hook, I didn't want to own this property. I haven't wanted to own this whole piece of property. I didn't want to pay four and a half million to own this piece of property, whatever was going to be done with it. So in essence, the only way we'll actually execute a purchase is if we get 90% of that money back. Four and a half million, what we're left is purchasing these little last pieces for $400,000. 90% of the money comes back through their arrangement, or we don't make the deal.
Correct.
And that 90% that we're going to get back will go back into the park bond?
The way it will actually work is, we would only contribute, we had put into escrow the $412,000, and then the Alliance would put into escrow the $4,088,000. So there's nothing to go back to the park funds. We're not going to issue $4.5 million in park bond proceeds and then reimburse the park bond fund. Instead, we're going to provide $412,000. The Alliance will provide $4,088,000. Those two will be aggregated, and the escrow agent will then provide that to 4J.
So to be clear, then, we won't tap the park bond for $4.5 million?
Correct.
So the park bond will still be available to the tune of $4 million to continue to purchase park property, hopefully, park property in the north part of Eugene?
Yes, although it won't even be a half a million of park bond proceeds. The park bond proceeds would be used for the pocket park, would not be used for the multi-use path. Those would be other funds. So the park bond proceeds would be roughly $250,000, and then the balance will still be available for other park uses.
So in terms of the hit to the park bond, it would be about $250,000?
Correct.
To purchase parkland?
Correct.
And then the other monies would come from somewhere else?
Correct.
From my standpoint, if the city can contribute that small amount in order to make this deal viable, because I like the idea of being able to do this, I just don't want to be the person who owns the property to have it done, but I would still like to see it done, and this looks like a way to help them do it without us having to, one, take a lot of money out of the park bond, which I was not in support of, and for all the reasons that have already been said, I don't agree with that, and only having $250,000 come out of that, still leaving that, all that money still there to do all of that other work, I think sounds reasonable. So from this standpoint, I think our risk is fairly minimal, and the potential reward, I think, is very high. So I can support this deal, and I do appreciate all the work that's gone into it, because I had a high level of discomfort going in, and my discomfort has definitely been much allayed. So thank you.
Claire?
Thank you. So, yeah, I'm in support of this proposal. I think, you know, we now have the added benefit of having Civic Alliance do the actual development and maintenance of the park and bike path. So I just want to say I'm really grateful to the folks involved with Civic Alliance and Save Civic and our city manager and city attorney for the work that has happened so far, for the ultimate goal of preserving this historic structure and creating a viable recreational facility that will benefit the entire region, not just the city of Eugene and not just the south part of the city. And as part of that deal, we make, I think, a fairly reasonable investment of park bond and other dollars to get a new park and bike path that's maintained, developed and maintained not by city funds, but by private funds while still remaining public space. So this could actually be a model that we might use in other parts of the city for other parks where we are struggling to develop and maintain our parks in parts of the city that are currently underserved. So I'm very pleased with this proposal and really hope that the rest of the pieces fall into place, as I know many other people do, too.
George Polling?
Thank you. What are the necessary assurances related to the OCF funds? What is that? Can you give me an explanation of what it is?
What I would be looking for, because I haven't had the conversation with OCF's attorney yet, but what I would be looking for, and the reason this is written to say it has to be assurances acceptable to the city manager is to give us a little flexibility, but what we would want is that the donors themselves will have already given the notice and direction to OCF that they want X amount of funds taken from, in essence, their accounts at OCF and provided for this project, and so that the only thing that is remaining to be done is that the OCF board has to take their official action to say that the funds can actually come out of the OCF bank accounts and be transferred to the escrow agent. So it would be everything up to the point, everything that needs to be done up to the point for the board to actually release the funds will have been done, and then we'd just be waiting for the OCF board to meet and then authorize that action.
And what kind of guarantee do we have of the subsequent maintenance of the park and the bike path or the right-of-way in the future? What happens five years from now, the Civic Alliance goes belly up? What then? Who's responsible?
So the way, and the agreements to implement this, we're still working on, but one of those agreements would be that sort of development and maintenance agreement, and it would, in part, provide that the Alliance would not be able to undertake the construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation of Civic until we have the details of what the plans would be for the development of the park and the bike path, that we see that the funds are there to do that. As, we don't know for sure what this pocket park is going to be, but for the most part, it's going to be, we think, more open space than actually, you know, structured play structures or anything like that. And so, for example, kids' sports, as they're mowing the rest of the field, would be able to go to the pocket park and mow that. So we don't have those details in place, but they would not be able to undertake the development at Civic until we have all those details in place. And so in part, what we have is the interest of all the donors who will have contributed over $4 million, saying, hey, we want the Alliance to actually create this structure, you know, rehab everything. And so they will be insisting that the pieces that need to happen to undertake that work be done, and that will include this provision, because we will have, before the 26th, we will have the agreement that says they have to maintain and develop the park. So we will have a legally binding document at that point.
Okay. And then, of the $412,000 that the city will be putting into this deal, $250,000 comes from park bond money. Is that correct?
Roughly, yes.
Okay. So where is the other 100, roughly $162,000 going to come from?
We're still trying to figure out the best places for that. Possibilities include council contingency and... What's the term? And...
An appropriated ending fund balance?
Thank you.
[laughing]
One of those funds. It's possible that we can use some money from transportation for the bike path, because what we're talking about, so there's the pocket park, and that's what we can use the park bond proceeds for. We don't know the exact square footage yet of that pocket park. That's why I say it's approximately $250,000. If it turns out the pocket park is a little bit bigger, then there'd be a little more than $250,000. If it's a little bit less, it'd be a little less. So it would be either general fund or transportation funds that can be used for a bike path.
Well, I can't support the motion. There's too many what-ifs still out there that I'm just not comfortable with. The only reason why I voted to go ahead with us trying to purchase this several months back was because it was a pretty clean-cut, straightforward deal. We'd buy it, turn around, immediately sell it. I was okay with that. This has morphed into something more that I'm not real comfortable with. I think the Civic Alliance people have a great plan, a great idea. I just, you know, I don't know why we're even still involved in it. If they've got so much backing, financial backing, why are we playing middlemen? Why don't we just completely pull out of it and let them deal with 4J? It makes no sense to me why we're getting involved in it. So I can't support this.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. This is really great. It's a culmination of many efforts through many years by lots of really hard-working people, and I'm so, I just want to congratulate the manager and attorney and Civic Alliance, and especially friends of Civic, for keeping the idea going for so long. We're really close, and this is a really good arrangement. It's minimal use of park bond funds. And in spite of what I heard earlier, Ward 1 actually has the smallest acreage of public parks of all the eight wards. So it's not unreasonable to do this. It's going to provide a tremendous public benefit, widespread, not just for the neighborhood, for the whole town. It's pretty centrally located. To try to reduplicate this anywhere else in town, it would cost many millions of dollars more. It would be on the periphery. It'd be hard to get to. This will benefit the whole region, actually, and it'll be all year round. Once the fieldhouse is constructed, will provide badly-needed indoor space for kids so they can get fit and stay healthy. And the field, of course, will be used probably about nine months out of the year, and it's just tremendous. I'm really happy, and I support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Alan?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a great day for, and a good, great deal for all of Eugene. It takes courage and vision to vote for this deal, so I congratulate and applaud my fellow city councillors for voting on this to do that. I think this is a fair deal, less than 10% city interest in it. We're not touching much of the park bond, and I think that's a great place for us to have landed. Thanks to the city manager and the city attorney for putting together a good deal for us and working through the details. Some did yet to be made, finalized, and get the keys crossed, and I got it. Eugene Civic Alliance, which is actually our community, it's Eugene, really has stepped up to the plate in coming up with the dollars and agreeing to take on the maintenance of the pocket park and the multi-use bike path. And congratulations, and thank you to all those people that worked on those at Eugene Civic Alliance. I think they did an amazing job and pulled off a minor miracle. I think there's little to no risk to the city, and I'm so excited that we can preserve history, add soccer, add a kids' sports fieldhouse, add community events, and have this vision get created. So I think it's time for us to get out of the way and let them create their amazing vision and put it into reality.
Thank you. I, too, would like to join in appreciation to the Eugene Civic Alliance, because this has been a long lift, heavy lift for them, and they worked unremittingly for a long time, and they didn't do it for any other reason than the fact that they wanted to create some opportunity for, in particular, the kids of our community to have an additional recreation facility spot that they could have available to them that we need very badly. So I'm very, very appreciative of this. Mike, you're next up.
Thank you, Mayor. I heard it said that it takes courage to vote for this. I think it takes blind faith. What we've just heard from the city attorney is that we know at least a quarter million dollars of the city's cost here will come from the parks bond, which the voters voted for specific purposes, and this isn't one of them. So we're specifically voting to spend money that the voters have allocated to something else. And we don't know at this time for sure where the other money's coming from. So the majority voting in favor of this have no idea where several hundred thousand dollars else will be coming from to fulfill our share of this. The other piece that George began to explore, which I didn't really hear an answer to, is, I, well, let me say first that I agree that if Civic Alliance has an opportunity to succeed at this, it will be wonderful for our community. I think it's a grand hope. I think it's a wonderful plan. I think if they can accomplish it, everyone will benefit. I just have real question, based on what they've shown so far, if they will have the capacity to raise the millions and millions of dollars it will take to develop this property, or whether it will set empty and as a fire hazard for years. So the question, then, is, that George began to ask, and is right to ask, what happens if we acquire this land for this property? Civic Alliance isn't ever able to raise the money sufficient to complete this project, which is a very real possibility? And then, am I correct in understanding that the city will be on the hook for developing and long-term maintenance of this new park? If that organization goes away, who will maintain it?
The, if the organization goes away, the park will not get developed. We will own an additional little over half acre of parkland that I'm assuming will remain undeveloped, just like we have other parkland that has remained undeveloped.
So in an era where we're about to have a conversation about how much more densely we want our community to be at its heart, we'll have 10 acres at its heart that are completely undeveloped if they are unsuccessful at their efforts to restore this area. It will sit as it is, and the park will be undeveloped if they're unsuccessful at raising that money?
If they are unsuccessful at raising that money, and unless the council develops a plan for how we're going to develop other parks and maintain them, I'm assuming that the pocket park would remain undeveloped. As to what happens to the other 10 acres, it's an asset that the Eugene Civic Alliance would own, that if they can't develop it, I don't know what would happen to it. It's possible that they turn around and sell it to somebody else, and then it gets developed. I don't know.
I would agree with your assessment that there's a great deal unknown, and that to vote in favor of this is, as I mentioned at first, blind faith. Thank you.
I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. Alan?
Yes?
Six in favor, in opposition, two, it passes. Thank you all. All right. Next up?
Yay!
Work session on Envision Eugene Urban Growth Boundary.
Would you put me in the queue, Mayor? Thank you.
I'll just turn it over to Robin.
All right. Thanks, everybody. So we're just talking about the revised UGB recommendation for housing today. This is our second run at this. I guess it's, takes three of us to deliver, actually, a fairly simple recommendation. No big surprises. Would be very exciting, but you already know the punchline. So as I mentioned, the reason we're making a preliminary staff recommendation, actually, you know what? Terry, I believe you have some comments that are prepared as well.
I'm happy to jump in.
So I had more to say, but I think I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Terry to provide a little bit of a preamble, and then I believe Alyssa will take care of the rest of the presentation.
And then we'll all stick around for questions.
Yep.
Great. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. What I wanted to do was just take a couple minutes to remind you about the spirit in which we're bringing you this revised recommendation. We continue to be motivated at the staff level by the common vision for Eugene's future and to help the community achieve our best outcomes as they relate to managing growth. You know that we've spent the first couple of years working very closely with the community to identify that common vision, and you know that we focus considerable time and energy on land use efficiencies that would allow us to accommodate nearly all, 96%, of our future single-family homes inside the current urban growth boundary. So for the remaining need, which was 535 homes, we proposed a modest expansion. We have heard a lot of community feedback on that preliminary recommendation. And that was the point, as Robin just started to say, of putting out a preliminary recommendation was so that we could hear concerns, correct errors, and move forward with the recommendation on a solid technical foundation and with broad community support. So Alyssa is going to walk you through the revisions, but I do want to address upfront the idea that we're proposing an increase in density in the south hills. It would be more accurate to say that through the normal iterative process of our analysis, we have discovered there is actually more housing capacity, more homes are likely to be built inside the UGB than we previously thought, and we'll explain that to you. We've known all along that development is challenging in hilly parts of the city. Our technical work considers that. The land has been looked at from every angle, with a group of community members devoted to a sound analysis process. The revised recommendation is thus data-driven. It fixes a misapplication of data to lands already in our inventory, and it adjusts assumptions on land above 900 feet in elevation, where evidence shows us that it's prudent to do so. Although the analysis is complex, it's also very thorough and reasonable. We believe this revised recommendation resulting from this analysis is the most responsible and legally sound path for Eugene. The revised recommendation will be available online through envisioneugene.org this week, and we will host an in-person open house tomorrow at the atrium building to answer questions and take feedback from the community. And you will also be holding a public forum on this topic next Monday night, and then the council will be asked to provide staff with direction after all of these events have occurred. The formal adoption, remember, is still to come, process, which will provide public hearing opportunities before the final decisions are made. Alyssa Hansen, Heather O'Donnell, who's also here, and the rest of staff have been working around the clock, almost literally, to analyze this new evidence and respond in a way that is consistent with state law and that considers our community's long-term vision for Eugene. I need to also thank the Technical Resource Group. They have been a critical resource for staff, also working tirelessly in many long hours to understand the information and to advise staff on the assumptions and analysis methodology. Thanks for your attention, and now Alyssa will give you the presentation.
Thank you, Terry. All right. So we are here today, of course, to talk about housing and the revised recommendation. This is what I will be covering today. I'm going to give you a quick recap of the recommendation that we presented to you in December at your December 10th meeting. I'm going to cover the major themes that we've received through our public input opportunities, and then I'm going to walk you through some of the additional analysis that we've done in response to this input and how that has shaped the revised recommendation. First, I'm going to back up to just, why are we here? And a lot of it has to do with housing affordability. We know that that is an issue in our community, and, you know, you've heard a couple weeks ago from us that Eugene faces higher unemployment and lower-than-average wages as compared to the rest of the state. And you can see on this slide that while family income is only... family income has increased over the past 30 years, that rent prices and mortgage prices have continued to grow. As a result of this, over 44% of Eugene households are considered housing cost burden. And a housing cost burden means that a family spends more than 30% of its income on housing. So with this information in mind, as you recall, one of the seven pillars of Envision Eugene is to provide housing that is affordable at all income levels. As we plan for housing, there's a number of factors that we must consider. First, we have to think about the number of people that we're expected to plan for. And in this case, it's based on an adopted 20-year population forecast. We're assuming about an additional 34,000 people will become members of our community over the next 20 years. We also need to think about the number of new homes we might need to accommodate these and other shifts in our population. Based on this increase in population, we expect to need approximately 15,000 new homes over the 20-year period as well. Also important are demographic and economic trends. Who's going to live here? What ages are they? What incomes are they? What kind of existing housing opportunities do they have? What are their preferences? What kind of housing can they afford? Those are all really important components that we must consider. Of course, housing mix is also very important, the type of housing, basically, is, you know, how much single-family should we be planning for versus how much multifamily should we be planning for? And then also, capacity of the land inside our current urban growth boundary. And here, I'm talking about, you know, we look at how many homes can we reasonably expect inside our current urban growth boundary while still maintaining that high level of livability that keeps us here. So as I mentioned, these are the major factors they considered, and they've all been considered heavily as part of the recommendation. So in terms of multifamily housing, there is no change to the recommendation. We're still planning for about 6,800 new multifamily homes over the next 20 years. It's anticipated that all of these will incur inside our urban growth boundary, and those will occur on vacant and partially vacant land. They'll occur through area planning along our key transit corridors and core commercial areas. And they'll also occur through the boosting of redevelopment and average densities in downtown, our key transit corridors, and core commercial areas. Now, work on all of these efforts is already underway. I'm sure you're familiar with the South Millamette area planning efforts, as well as the downtown riverfront planning efforts. Those are just two examples of the ongoing work for multifamily. Now, in terms of single-family, you're going to have to bear with me because you already know the punchline, but let me just do a little bit of recap what we talked to you about in December. We still are anticipating about 8,300 new single-family homes over the next 20 years. As we said in December, at that time, we had determined that 94% of those homes could fit inside our current urban growth boundary on vacant and partially vacant lands. So that remaining or unmet need of approximately 530 to 535 homes really is what would require a modest urban growth boundary expansion. So again, inside the urban growth boundary, the single-family homes are expected to occur on our vacant lands or partially vacant lands. And in addition, we've been doing a lot of work to unlock capacity inside the urban growth boundary. So as you'll recall, last year, you approved the redesignation of nearly 200 acres of land to allow for single-family development. This included in the Crow Road area, Gillum area, and Irving areas. We're also committed to providing for infrastructures improvements. There are parts of our community that are planned for single-family but actually don't have the necessary infrastructure to be developed. So we are committed to making sure that our plans, such as our public facilities plan and our capital improvement plan, have those needed projects in place so that these areas can be developed with single-family housing. Similarly, there are parts of the community within the urban growth boundary that are planned for single-family where there are transportation constraints that currently limit development capacity. We are working to resolve those transportation-related limitations through the in-progress update of our transportation system plan. So here's a recap of where we were proposing for expansion. We recommended two areas back in December. The first was southwest of our current urban growth boundary, two small pockets of land in the Bailey Hill, Gimble Hill area. These were identified as the most cost-effective to serve of all of the study areas that we looked at. The second expansion area outside of Eugene's southeast there was in Bloomberg-McVay area across from Lang Community College. This area was identified as having unique characteristics that are in alignment with our community vision and values. So together, these relatively small sites were able to provide enough capacity for our total expansion need of about 535 homes, or again, 6% of our 20-year need. So knowing already that we're not proposing to expand at this point, you might be wondering, what are we going to do with all of that information? Because clearly, a lot of analysis went into our urban growth boundary expansion study. But I think the good news is for you and for me, since I worked on a lot of that, is that it's actually really useful if the city pursues urban reserve planning. That requires a very similar analysis, the same lands, a very similar process. So all of that information, or most of that information, will be able to be used as part of urban reserves. So speaking of urban reserves, back in December, we did also recommend that the city do urban reserve planning as an important component of the ongoing monitoring program. And it provides both flexibility and certainty for our community, and it allows us to plan for an additional 30 years, up to additional 30 years beyond the original 20 that were required. Also, as part of the preliminary recommendation, we recommended looking at land use regulations that would apply to the expansion areas, just so we could right-size those regulations, that they made sense, that property owners there were able to continue with common practices, such as having farm animals, and they could continue until they were urbanized. We also wanted to make sure that significant natural features were given the same protections as they have inside the current urban growth boundary, and we wanted to make sure that transportation issues associated with those areas, whether local or regional, were addressed through the update of the city's transportation system plan. So following the preliminary recommendation at your December meeting, we did receive a lot of public comment. We heard through people in a variety of ways. We held an in-person open house, an online open house. There was a survey. You had the results at the last meeting regarding jobs, parks, and schools. We also had, you heard from folks directly at the council public forum, and then staff. We have been meeting with people individually, responding to emails, and making presentations to groups. In terms of housings, there were several themes that we heard. Much of the public input was really focused on the individual expansion areas, specifically the challenges and concerns with bringing those lands into the urban growth boundary. You heard about such things as natural resources, transportation, the high cost of services. You also heard several suggestions for alternative areas to consider for expansion. So in addition to the actual expansion areas, we heard a lot, we also heard issues related to the technical framework for this recommendation. And those include housing mix, whether or not the city had the most current information, and whether or not you had the most current information, and then capacity of housing on sloped lands, whether or not we were using the correct assumptions and applying it with a correct methodology. So I'd like to spend a little bit of time telling you about the additional analysis we've done regarding housing mix, as well as housing capacity on sloped land. So first, starting with housing mix. As you may recall, this topic was addressed by the city council in mid-2012, and that resulted in a decision to assume a future housing mix of 55% single-family and 45% multifamily, and this is for new housing. So as part of the public input, you heard that, given recent housing trends, specifically the increase in multifamily that we've seen, that the city should relook at the issue of housing mix. I will note that staff has updated the mixed calculations with new data through 2014, and there's a memo at your place that summarizes this data. As you can see by looking at the table on the back, development activity between 2009 and 2014 did indeed include a significant increase in the share of multifamily housing. However, we did take a closer look at the multifamily permit data to see, you know, what percentage of that was student housing versus what percentage of that was non-student housing. And what we did see is that this increase is due in a large part to the student housing boom. However, the University of Oregon has told us that they are not expecting any significant growth over the next 20 years. And we do think that the student housing need for off-campus private housing has been met and accounted for in all of our assumptions. So we're not planning at this point for any future student housing. So when we factor the student housing projects into the mixed data, or actually, when we factor them out of the mixed data, the resulting mix of the housing built between 2001 and 2014 shows that we had 59% of that were in single-family units and 41% were multifamily units. So taking this into consideration, we think that the variations you're seeing appear to be consistent with the gradual housing market shift that was anticipated by your previous decision for 55-45 split. While we expect concerns to continue to be expressed around housing mix, staff recommends proceeding with the current assumption of 55% single-family, 45% multifamily, while closely monitoring actual development trends. The next topic was capacity on sloped lands. And so capacity really refers to the number of homes that we can reasonably expect to be built on vacant and partially vacant lands. And in this case, we're talking about in the South Hills generally. So anything sloped is typically anything above 5%. And there were two main concerns related to housing capacity that have been identified, and we've spent the last month or two, actually, vetting these with staff, with our consultants, and with the Technical Resource Group. The first is really about how we apply a density assumption. And evidence was submitted that densities on, the density assumption we were using on sloped land was actually not being applied accurately. I'll tell you more about this in a minute. And then second, evidence was presented that for lands that are above 900 feet in elevation, that they really do have a higher capacity than we were assuming, and that's based on existing development we're seeing right now. So in terms of the application of density assumption on sloped land, and I know that's a mouthful, and I couldn't come up with a better way, or any way to make it sound less wonky, but it is, I will say that this is a complicated and highly technical topic. I kind of see it as a multi-part story problem, so I'm going to attempt to simplify it for you. But really, to determine capacity of these vacant and partially vacant lands, there's two parts to that. First is, we have to determine what density are we going to apply to them? So what density are we going to assume that these lands will be developed with? And then we have to determine how we're going to apply it. Originally, for all lands inside the urban growth boundary, whether they were flat or sloped, we used the same assumptions. But obviously, sloped lands have unique characteristics. They have more constraints, given the topography. You know, obviously, our South Hills are heavily treed, and there's more creeks and streams. So we ultimately realized it was more reasonable to have a different way of looking at sloped lands as compared to flatlands. So to determine what density we should apply to the vacant lands, we looked at approved subdivisions throughout the South Hills. And we did that up through 2008, and then we recently did it again through the most current data we had. And kind of eerily, we get the same number from '01 to '08, from '01 to '14, you get 2.5. That's really the density that we see occurring in the South Hills. And that, we do believe that that takes in those constraints into account. It takes in tree preservation. It takes in preservation of other natural features. So the question isn't whether or not that's the right density. The question here is really how we apply that density. And so what evidence, as I mentioned, was submitted that we didn't apply it accurately. And when we looked at that, it's true. We essentially applied it the correct density, but we applied it to a smaller subset of land than we should have. And ultimately, once we reran our calculations and determined, what we figured out is that we were undercounting the actual capacity of those lands. So I want to clarify, and Terry brought this up already, we're not assuming or adding or even requiring higher densities in these areas. We're actually correcting how that density was applied. So in terms of the second topic, and this is about capacity about 900, above 900 feet in elevation. Now, this map, the shaded area, shows all the lands within our urban growth boundary that are above 900 feet in elevation. Now, if I overlaid our parkland layer and the layer that shows developed, so subdivisions, address points, there'd be a much smaller subset of this. So, and that's actually the lands I'm going to be talking about. So why is 900 feet such a magic number? Well, it's based on a policy in our South Hills study that actually limits development above 900, actually, 901 feet in elevation. And it limits it to either one home per existing lot, or it allows more if you go through a planned unit development or a public hearing process. So initially, we took the conservative approach of applying one unit to each of the vacant lots above 900 feet in elevation. However, evidence was submitted and shown to us that, you know, even more recently, we're seeing, we are seeing more than one unit per lot on these properties. So we took a look at, we took, relooked at the recent and historic development activity above 900 and realized that for larger lots, it really is reasonable to assume more than one unit will be built over the next 20 years on each of these lots. So I'll give you one example that I think is a good one. There's a lot that it actually straddles the 900 feet, but about 26 acres of it are above 900. In our capacity analysis, we were applying that this lot would have one home built on it above 900 feet. And we really think it's prudent and reasonable to expect that more than one home would be built on 26 acres. So this, when we recalculated this, it did result in an increase in the housing capacity, again, for those larger parcels above 900 feet. So with those two recalculations, what we've discovered is that we have, is that the number of single-family homes that can fit inside our urban growth boundary is more than enough to meet our 20-year need. So, and another way to say that, that this really eliminates the need for a single-family residential expansion. And in fact, we actually have a small surplus. We are refining that number and can share it with you once it's actually firmed up. As I mentioned, we are still taking actions to unlock capacity, or we have taken some actions to unlock the capacity inside our current urban growth boundary and are still committed to doing those. Again, there's the lands that, nearly 200 acres that have been redesignated. We're planning for those to be developed, making sure they have the necessary infrastructure. We're also providing for needed infrastructure in other parts of our community that are lacking that, as well as resolving the transportation limitations. Another important component of the revised recommendation is a commitment, a strong commitment to an ongoing monitoring program. Obviously, you know, with a 20-year plan that's built on assumptions and projections, we're probably not going to be 100% accurate. So it's really important that we track our progress in terms of these assumptions, in terms of land consumptions, densities, housing mix, and other key indicators of development capacity. That will allow us to evaluate, you know, what's actually happening and consider adjustments if needed. In addition, the recommendation continues to include urban reserve planning, and we recommend that the city initiate a process to identify urban reserves following the adoption of our Eugene-specific urban growth boundary. Urban reserve planning will enable our community to plan more comprehensively and predict growth, or predictably plan for growth, I don't know, yeah, over a time horizon of up to 50 years. And as I mentioned, initial work has already been done on this, laying the groundwork for this planning effort, and so we can carry forward that work. So in terms of next steps, Terry did mention most of these, but again, we have a public open house for the public to come speak to staff, ask questions, learn more about the recommendation, and that's tomorrow afternoon from 4:00 to 6:00 in the atrium. On Monday night, there's a city council forum where the public can provide input to you directly about the recommendation. Also, on Monday, we'll be presenting the revised recommendation to the Eugene Planning Commission. Commission, and then returning to you next week for direction on the housing recommendation. So once we have city council direction, we'll be preparing a single adoption package for jobs, parks, schools, and housing, so that we can go forward and have our Eugene-specific urban growth boundary. And we'll be bringing that to the city and county later this year for the formal hearing process. That concludes my presentation, and we're available for questions.
Any comments? Nope. All right, I have Mike and George Polling in the queue, and Claire, and George Brown. Before I call on them, I guess a comment that I would like to make is, I received an email today which indicated a person who wrote it thought that we were coming to a different decision based on our desire to stay within the urban growth boundary as opposed to objective criteria. So I just, I know you already just walked through that very carefully, but I just want to emphasize that you have continued to use the same methodology throughout and not used a different methodology for the instance you used previously, correct?
We're using the same density assumption on that first subset of lands I mentioned. We actually ultimately misapplied it to the wrong subset of land, and so that was the correction that's been made in that account.
Right, so you're not changing how you do it, you just note you misapplied it, is what you, right. And the other thing is that one member of the TRG discovered the discrepancy in how you did it, but you took it back to the whole TRG to look at, to make sure that everybody agreed about how you move forward.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, it is true that there is one member of the technical resource group who raised this issue. We looked at it, agreed that there, you know, it looked like it had been misapplied. We did bring that back to the technical resource group, and there was broad agreement that, yes, we had actually unintentionally applied it to a smaller set of lands. And it sounds so simple, but I have to say, it is really complicated, because as I mentioned, we had originally looked at flatlands, sloped land, all the same. Changed how we looked at the sloped land in one part, but just didn't change the application of it, so.
Correct. The only other things I wanted to say that I was, I was bothered in the discussion about multifamily, and I know it's the way it's set up, is that you're counting student housing as part of multifamily, and I think most of us would not think of student housing as, as multifamily. So I know you segregated that out to look at the trend, and I do think it will continue to be really important to monitor what's happening with our multi-unit housing over time, and we may, I think the public should be aware that we may be modifying it over time as we see shifts in how people are, are living.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your report. I, I have to tell you that I have a sentiment about the development of this that's different than the mayor's. I had high hopes at the beginning of this process that we would come to a community compromise that everyone would be able to live with and live with well, that would have a high degree of integrity and participation in it. I see the direction changing. I had at least the basic hopes that while maybe many people wouldn't be happy, they could at least live with the result of what we've come up with. The recent developments appear to me as if the city has changed the rules in the ninth inning of the game. And it's becoming unfair to some interests involved in the process of creating a reasonable community plan. So I want to talk about that, and I want to talk, I have some other questions about your process and your assumptions that will help me understand better whether or not this is an appropriate result, a fair result, and what to do about it next from my perspective. So I guess I would say that, in the beginning, Teri mentioned that there was a great deal of public input, there were, this was, the preliminary results were put out, and you got some input, and one was from the member of the TRG that you mentioned. That's one way to classify this person or to define them. Others might consider that person to be a no-growth special interest group. And I would say that we have changed the rules based on that input, and it's good that we, we put this out for public input and that we've responded to it appropriately. But my question is, the HBA represents hundreds of people in our community, and they've written a specific letter with their concerns, and I want to know from the manager when they can expect a reply from staff about their concerns with this, the process and the rules. Can you give me an answer?
Not today.
I think that, in order to be fair, is it, it is at least reasonable that while there are different sides with different opinions on this, that we respond to everyone equally and fairly, rather than only one side and alter our decisions based on only one point of view. I think that is both unfair and a distortion of the process that everybody had faith in that we started with. So I have grave concerns about that.
And I guess what I would say is, I also think we will want to respond to people's various concerns. Today, I don't know when we will respond or what that response will be, but I do think people that have participated throughout this entire process, and those that haven't, if they have input, that we do want to be respectful and respond back to that, so.
But do we want to be able to alter the staff's recommendation based on their concerns the same way they've altered their recommendation based on the concerns of one special interest group?
Well, the way I would characterize it is, what we do is, we take lots and lots of input from many, many people and have throughout this entire process. We'll bring that into our analysis, and based on all of that, we will then develop our best recommendation based on that. And so whomever has input, we look at that, we review that, and if we believe, then that should be a part of the recommendation, we will make that part of the recommendation.
Mayor, I have six seconds. Will you put me down for a second round, please, and then I'll have more specific questions.
George Polling?
Thank you. First point I'd like to make is, is the, on the slide where it shows the, the 2001 to 2014 housing mix, except for the student housing, it's 59% single-family and 41% multifamily. When we started this process years ago, the original suggestion was a 60-40 mix, which is actually closer to what is currently shown in the stats for the last 14 years than what we're actually going to. But people entered into this process in good faith, and we came to the decision that we'll settle for the 55-45 mix instead of going for the 60-40 mix. So it's just one point. You know, I personally have to question the timing and true motive of this aha moment at the very last of the supposed miscalculations. If somebody's been involved in this process all along, how come that wasn't brought up sooner? As, as we were working through this over the last several years, you know, I, I thought we were moving along at a pretty good process, people were pretty happy, but somewhere deep inside, I had this feeling that, you know, something was going to go wrong, that we were being played. And somewhere I heard, you know, if you feel like you're being played, you probably are. And I feel like this is what's happened to this process. I don't, I don't question the, the information that staff has come up with based on this, the suggestion. I, I'm not going to try to argue that, I'm not that much of a technical person. I just have to truly question the motives on bringing it up at this very last minute. I also have some concerns about, you know, moving the, the building onto the hillside. That requires much more land for building, for tree preservation, slope consideration, and, and stormwater management. This is going to reduce the density, I believe, of what we're trying to achieve. We're also, by coming up with too limited of a land supply, will be more, it's going to be more expensive to build the houses, which means we're going to have less affordable housing for the people that we would like to see moving into our neighborhood. And, you know, by the more expensive homes, what we're doing is, we're creating a situation where people are going to start looking at the outlying areas where they can buy less expensive homes that they can actually afford. And in doing that, I think we're going to put a big demand on our infrastructure, and we're actually going to cause more gas emissions or carbon emissions because of people traveling to and from the outlying areas into the, the employment center, so to speak, of, of our area. And also by doing that, I think we're actually increasing sprawl by making people move out to these other communities that are willing to build affordable, by affordable, I mean houses, that people can afford to buy.
Mayor, just real quick, and George, I do appreciate your comments that, and I would agree, that the intent of the staff throughout this process has been in good faith throughout, so I appreciate your comments to that. And we won't ascribe motives, or I won't ascribe motives to others in that process. It has been a long, arduous journey, for sure, and I think for us on staff, we have tried to maintain that intent in good faith and have tried to have the information and data drive the decision, knowing that not everybody's agreeing with it. So I do appreciate your comments.
Claire?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the correction and the awkward position that it put you in, and I commend the way that you handled the discovery of the, this error of application and took the time to consult with the TRG and bring us back a revised recommendation. From, from where I sit, data is data. It is not a matter of opinion or advocacy, and you had the responsibility to correct that error so that our data is accurate. I did have a question. You mentioned urban reserves, and I've heard reference to this before, and I wonder if you'd take a moment to just expand on what urban reserves are and how they would maybe help us in the future.
So urban reserve planning would actually allow us to plan for up to an additional 30 years beyond the 20. So, you know, thinking ahead, if, if, you know, we're going to not be expanding over the next 20 years, we may need to expand in the future. And so the urban reserve planning process allows us to identify in advance of any needed expansion where we may, where our preferable areas are for growth, and that would actually help us in terms of infrastructure planning, it would help in terms of certainty. So the next time we're going through an urban growth boundary expansion process, we've got, you know, we've really narrowed down the areas in terms of where we would propose for an expansion. So those are just two of the benefits of that.
And it's different from the envisioned Eugene process, how?
It would be, well, it's different in that this land would remain in the county, so it would, it would not come inside our urban growth boundary, but at some future date, when we did need to do an urban growth boundary expansion, those were the lands that we would go to first.
And then, thank you. So the last thing I wanted to say, I'm glad to get this updated information. I know many residents had expressed real concerns about the two areas that had been recommended for expansion. It didn't, they didn't conform to good sustainability practice, and the estimated expense of trying to serve those areas was very high, which also was a concern because it would most likely have meant that the housing units built in those areas would be very, very high-end. So we may still be experiencing some of that dynamic with the places that we're talking about in the South Hills, so I, I don't think we're totally out of that concern, but I do appreciate the updated information and the way that you have approached this challenging, slightly awkward situation. Thank you.
George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I think anytime is a good time to correct an error, you know, made in, in good faith. We, we can all make mistakes, and we can all overlook things, and any time it's brought to our attention, we should be able to correct it and, and move on. And I, I don't have a problem with that at all. This, this new data was, or I mean, the look was, was vetted by the TRG, is that correct? They, they looked over everything and pretty much agreed with it, but.
Yeah, I'd say that, yeah, definitely, that the need to reapply the, the density assumption was, there was general agreement about that, but I, I think in, the more questions you ask, as in with any situation, you reach a point to where the data doesn't yield any additional information. So I think we reached that point.
Okay. Well, now, is this, is this available online, the, the old assumption and the new assumption regarding the, like, because we, we didn't get it in our packet, and I'm wondering if it's online where we can see a comparison of the old density assumptions on sloped land and land above 900 feet?
Yeah, I think generally, all the information that we've talked about at the TRG has been made available online. There's, there's a spreadsheet and lots of other information with that, so we would add this to that, yes.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I'd just like to point out, and just address a couple of comments I heard some of the councillors make, is, you know, there, there actually, if you, if you drive around through the South Hills, there's lots of different neighborhoods, there's lots of different environments. There's, actually, there's certain areas are quite dense. The houses are real close together, the yards are really small. It's not like, you know, people, and it's mixed income, too. Not everybody that lives there are millionaires. There's actually, you know, some publicly supported housing in certain areas, and economically, it's very mixed, too. So I, I don't know, there's, I, I would assume that there would be a wide range of, of, you know, just like there is now. Then there are still some buildable lands up there, and I would assume it would not all be high-end housing. Was there any thought given to that analysis of what the, what the price range of housing that's likely to be built there, or is that outside of the scope of the analysis?
I'd say that was outside of the scope of what we looked at. I do want to qualify my earlier statement, so there was not unanimous agreement among the TRG on all aspects of the analysis. So we want to be clear that what we're presenting here today is a staff recommendation, so we did have to make judgment calls in looking at that information that was reviewed by the TRG, and, and they provided their best advice to staff.
Would we be able to look at a?
Yes.
I, I know in the past, we've been able to see the full range of comments, recommendations coming from various committees and commissions. If we could, if we could see some of the dissenting views, that might be useful, too. Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Thanks for coming forward with this new information. Planning for the future is a guessing game. There is no way around it. When you're trying to predict the future, you're guessing. Hopefully, it's a best guess, or a guess that's based on the best information that you have at the time. I would hope that the process of guessing the future is not based on strictly just an ideology, or politics, or some other non-factual-based reason. I think the process so far has been one that's been making every effort to base it on as much facts, figures, and public input. I mean, you had a robust input process. The fact that this late in the game, new information has come forward, can cause someone to say, well, is this new information coming forward factual, or is it ideological, or is it political? It would be a logical question to wonder, particularly when it comes so late in the game. Kind of like when new evidence occurs, when somebody's sitting on death row and their execution is next week, and they say, we found new evidence, is the point to try to save them from execution or to present new evidence? And sometimes they rule, no, the jury's rendered their verdict, I don't care what the new evidence is. Sometimes they will. It, it's a guessing game, once again, to know. Having looked at the information, I'm inclined to think that your reconsideration is not based on ideological or political concerns, because I think in order to do it that way, there would have had to have been a mutual agreement among a number of people that that was the way they wanted to go. If it was just one person making the decision, that could be possible, but you would then have to be a party to it, the rest of the planning staff would have to be a party to it, the city manager would have to be a party to it, since he reviews your work. A lot of people would have to be in collusion for this to suddenly become the new way we go unless there was some sort of factual basis on which you all agreed. And so I'm, I'm having the faith to say, you don't just do it because one person asked you to do it. You do it because they brought you evidence at the last minute, you looked at it and said, this evidence isn't just to save the prisoner, this evidence is, golly, it's factual. I know you take it to a TRG, and because of the way this process works, it's very hard for them to try to evaluate it right away. That's why we're not making a decision today. I do think we should consider all the different perspectives, this being one of them, but for me, it's a very persuasive perspective, because where I live in the South Hills, I can drive right now up above 900 feet, and there's housing units up there. There's planned unit developments above 900 feet, I can drive through them right now, which means to make an assumption that we wouldn't build anything above 900 square feet except one building. I can tell just from driving around, it's not true. So I think your motives are pure, I think you're in I think your intentions are honorable, and I don't question the integrity of anybody who's been involved in this process.
Betty.
Thank you. I think this is good news, and it's also good news that people are willing to change when there's evidence in support of change. I continue to think, as many people in the community do, that we have it, that it should be 60% multifamily and 40% single-family. But we, and I hope that that's what we'll come to in the future. I think that is a trend, from what I hear nationwide, for more multifamily, which would postpone still further than any need to expand an urban growth boundary. And I think, when people say ideological, I guess, I think of ideals. And I think the ideal is to be compact, to protect our agricultural land, and to use as, to protect all the resources, and avoid the need for more infrastructure. So I think this is really good news. Thank you.
Mayor, could I get in the queue for the first round?
Yep, you're on.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to thank staff for correcting this math error without changing the rules or doing anything unethical or political. Math is math, and catching and correcting errors is exactly why we do drafts for comment, so we can catch those things and get it right. And we did, and the process worked. So I commend staff for the way that they handled this awkward circumstance, especially since it's so late in the game. I think this is pretty very complex stuff. I mean, you can ask Springfield how complicated it is. And errors do occur, and that's why we do the process the way we do it, so we can catch them. Regarding the single-family, multifamily mix percentages, I understand the concerns people have on both sides of that. And actually, I think, given the trends that are occurring, and that look like they're going to continue to occur, it's probably going to be more like 50-50 into the future. But I'm glad to see an update of the data. Since we're not doing an expansion of the UGB for residential, changing the ratio at this point wouldn't make any difference to our work here, or to the UGB, and especially if we lowered it. And I think we should get it right, but I don't think we really need to do that now. We built into this process two important things. The five-year review and adjustments is the first one, and given the recession, and it's almost obliteration of single-family home construction and the boom in student housing, I think it distorted people perceptions about the trends. And given a bit of time, like over the next five years, I think we, and if we're lucky, this issue will become a lot more clear, and we'll get a better trend. The other thing is the creation of the urban reserves, which will allow us to plan for 50 years of growth. And those two things leave me a conclusion that it's okay to go from where we are right now. But, Mr. City Manager and planning staff, can we assure the folks that are concerned about this issue that this issue will be comprehensively and thoroughly investigated in next update review, and that will come to a conclusion based on most up-to-date data at that point in time?
I would say yes, absolutely. Yeah, we've learned a tremendous amount through this process, that I can say. And everything we've learned will be carried forward into the monitoring process.
Alan, are you finished?
Yes, that's it, thank you.
So, just a couple of comments, and then I've got Mike and George in the queue again. I just want to say that this is sort of like what we say as council sometimes. We say what people want us to say, they agree with us. I would also say that what Alan referred to is that when Springfield was doing their work, they found a technical glitch towards the end of their process as well and had to make adjustments. So this is not an unusual thing. I would also say that one of the things that we always have to bear in mind is the process is open until the process is not open. That's the point of it being open, is that it's iterative, and you can learn, and you can move and change. So, and we would hope that we wouldn't have already made up our minds and would not be open to information as it comes, as long as the process is still, is still open. So, for all of those reasons, I think, I don't actually, actually honestly feel that this is so difficult. I think it's just something we have to adjust to, and we might find, before this is over, we have to adjust to something else again. So that's just sort of the nature of the business that we're in. So Mike, you're next, and then George.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your comments, and I agree with them. My concerns were not about the ethics, or the intent, or the motivations of staff. You guys work hard, and you're trying to do the right thing. I don't have any problem with that at all. What I'm saying is this, I want to make sure, and this is our job, the council's job, is to make sure this process is appropriate, legal, and fair for everyone who has an interest involved, okay? And from my perspective, I have grave concerns about whether or not we're proceeding in the most wise way to accomplish that end. We also want to make sure that our community builds and has a long-term blueprint for growth that makes homes affordable and welcoming for young families, for low-income people, and for new residents. And right now, it looks like we're proceeding in a direction that continues to say, you're not welcomed here. You'll need to move to Springfield, or Coburg, or Cresswell, or Harrisburg, where you can afford a place. And I'm concerned that we're not taking that appropriately into how, into our calculations. I agree with Claire. We should always be looking at this and saying, let's refine our data, let's make the best estimate we can, let's make, use the best information we have. I agree entirely. But this isn't, as was said, a math error. This isn't look like we, this isn't like we looked at the page and said, oops, look, we forgot to carry the three in this column. This proceeds from a set of assumptions we made about the rules. We assumed, and the TRG and everyone involved for frankly, too many years now, have proceeded from agreements and rules, and we're changing only one of them at the end. Now, the people who think about this differently have provided you with a whole host of other assumptions which you might look at and say, gosh, we didn't really look at that properly yet either. My concern is that we respond to their input as quickly as possible and as effectively as possible, because I find some of their concerns valid. I find some of our assumptions and our processes troubling, and I want us to be doing this fairly and without any bias in our process. So, when it comes to, you know, what percentage of the South Hills undeveloped property is in fact a Goal V resource, there are questions that need to be answered. Do we have a dual-track process for how we develop land? Should it be based on discretionary standards, or should it be on clear and objective standards? And if so, which percentage of which? Let's be clear about the rules for everybody, because the state's going to watch us. And if we're not going to be clear about the rules, that's not fair. So, I would also suggest that the county commissioners have a role in this, and they should be watching, because they co-adopt with us, and I hope they are.
George Pauling.
I'll pass.
So, I just want to ask one question. So in this last look at the way that you, the calculations, was there a change in the rules of how you looked at those calculations?
The assumption.
I wouldn't characterize it as a change in a rule. The assumption never changed. We continued to use the same density assumption, that it was how it was applied. I will say, above 900, we did change from one unit per lot, assuming one unit per lot, to assuming 2.5 dwelling units per acre. So if that's the change, then yes, there was an increase with that. But the original one that I was talking about was really about how that density assumption was applied, and it really was in error.
I'm trying to understand this, because what I thought I heard was that you had a way of looking at things, you relooked, you relooked at that and said, that's not the way we should be looking at it. And so you...
Here we go. Yep. So this is how we came up with the density assumption. So imagine this is a subdivision in the South Hills. The brown in the houses each represent a lot. The blue represents protected area. In this case, we'll pretend it's a stream. So when we looked at the South Hills and looked at all the developments, the subdivisions that have been approved since our new land use code, to calculate density, we looked at the entire subdivision, and we said, wow, on average, these subdivisions all have, on average, there's 2.5 dwelling units per acre, so 2.5 homes per acre. Now, when we applied that to a vacant piece of land, what we did is only apply that density to a smaller subset of the land. So, we took the assumption based on the whole property, but then only applied that density to the smaller assumption. That was incorrect. What we should have done is, we did the first part correct. What we needed to do for that second step is then apply the density to the entire development site.
That explanation.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have, as a city, an obligation to provide clear and objective standards for how to develop homes?
Thank you for speaking my language.
Yeah.
Yes, we do, and it's been acknowledged time and time again by the state.
So, when we show a part of the property constrained, there are lots of things that constrain how some areas can be developed, right? I mean, there's, there's issues around storm drainage, there's issues around density, there's issues around transportation, there are lots of restrictions, right?
Right.
So, what, so sometimes we develop things based on clear and objective standards, and sometimes on subjective standards, because we ask people to make an application, and whether we say yes or no as a city is subjective. Is that correct?
Right, depends on how the individual applies. They can apply on a clear and objective track that we offer, or they can apply under a discretionary track.
Is that, then, different in how we calculate land? Do we have an obligation to provide a particular percentage of the land that is based on clear and objective standards for development?
The, no, I don't, we disagree with the home builder's assertion. It was, and I assume you're referring to the main argument in the home builder's letter. And they've, they've made this argument since like 2008, 2009, when ECLA was the project, when the BLI was first established. We looked into it very carefully at that point in time, and have kept track of that argument over time. In the process of doing so, we've watched Mr. Close make the same argument in several other jurisdictions and projects in Eugene as well. And also, in the process, we've seen DLCD issue both a staff letter, or a staff, a staff response, and a formal response from DLCD's director that specifically addresses that argument and disagrees with the home builder's position.
I wasn't actually trying to make this personal so much as I wanted to talk about what our city rightfully ought to do. Should we provide clear, objective standards for how people may develop things and at what percentage? Or should we be a municipality that constantly wants to change the rules and make subjective decisions about how people should develop things? In other words, that changes the cost and makes it incredibly more expensive for housing. How should we deal with this appropriately? And here's the best question, isn't that a council decision?
Is that rhetorical?
No, it's not. Actually, it's not, and here's why. Because it occurs to me that council isn't being presented with this, a level of decision-making, which is what we ought to be. So I'm asking, are these decisions made based on state law? Are they made based on policy? Should we be reviewing them at council?
What I will say on that is that, yeah, we've, we've received a memo from the home builders that outlines a variety of considerations, and we're definitely taking a look at that right now. We're going to come back. What I'm, what we're trying to do a little bit as part of this presentation is separate more the technical aspects of how we're going about the process of identifying our capacity from some of the legal arguments that are, that are being presented.
Excuse me, forgive my interruption, but isn't whether or not how you just calculated that based on one party's input a legal distinction about how you calculate density?
No, I wouldn't say so.
Okay. So, again, my original question, it seems to me, and is one of the things I said in the first place, there are many parties with many different ideas on how we ought to proceed with the assumptions that we started with and how the rules of the game work. But it seems to me, I have concern that we're only, at this point, reacting to one group's concerns, and that isn't an appropriate way for council to make an decision. So can you address that a little bit more?
I guess what I'm hearing, and we don't have the answer for the moment, what I'm hearing is, is there a policy decision that the council could or should make that might impact the outcome of this particular analysis? So it's not just a technical question, there may be a policy question that the council may choose to address.
Thank you.
I don't know the answer to that, so we'll have to take a look at that and then get back to the council on that question.
Thank you, sir.
So what I would say is, throughout the Envision Eugene process, staff has come back to check with council on a regular basis, are we moving along under what the policy direction you want us to move along? And all of us can say around this table that probably not once have we all agreed. So, but, there has been a majority decision that comes out of each of those policy discussions that has pushed the next part of the decision-making. So the truth of this is, yes, there will be still that fundamental disagreements, but we have voted numerous times on the direction, the policy direction we intend to go, and that is the direction that our staff has been following throughout this process. I would not be surprised to find that some people who didn't agree at the beginning still disagree today. I think time's up for today. Thank you, everybody.